I wanted to see if they knew what trees were gonna, what trees they figured out they were offering.
Right.
So I don't know yet. I have made up my mind while I'm doing a phone call.
Okay.
Ready for Saturday?
Oh yeah, get your arm ready to go?
Arm ready.
I can't wait, that's gonna be such a neat.
That is gonna be a blast.
No way you can get into the sausage stuff, it filled up and he and I are gonna play one.
Juice.
Yeah, that's for, that's for council.
Are we a team or against each other?
No, I'm a team. Um, I kinda thought about um, seeing if I could get into sausage eating contest.
Yeah.
But I'm like, I mean, I can eat hot stuff, but it's like, do I have to eat like, big huge, like I can't eat, I can eat two, but not five, which I think is what it is.
I'm just feeling it out this year for next year.
Yeah, just getting ready. What were you saying?
Catherine was joking, she was gonna, she had a pug, she was joking, she's gonna buy like a hot dog Halloween costume and call it Wiener Dog and enter in the Wiener Dog.
So I, if you guys ever seen the movie Out Cold, going to your bottom, I age, you haven't seen Out Cold, it was like a, it was a snowboard movie from like back in the late nineties, early two thousands. And they did this thing called King of the Mountain.
Oh yeah.
Remember that where they, they ski down, uh, or snowboarded down the mountain with a thing of beer. And so I was telling Katie, I said this.
That seems safe.
Right. It's Hollywood. No, I was telling Katie, I got this, this obstacle course, cause they, I think one of the events for Saturday is carrying beer.
Yeah, sign race.
It's sign race. And I said, I gotta figure it out. I said, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna start at the line, I'm gonna take a swig of the beer and I'm gonna run through the race, I'm not gonna care if I spill anything, cause it's gonna be down this far. I'm gonna get to the end, I'm gonna spit it back in the cup. And, and she's like, I don't think that's, I think that's cheating, so.
It's like putting weight in your fish.
Yeah, I was just gonna go there too.
Can you believe that?
Can somebody explain to me why that's such a big deal?
Cause it was like a thirty thousand dollar prize.
Because they weigh the fish.
You win by weight.
Okay, but isn't, isn't the video him catching him though?
Yep, you catch it, but then the winner is the one that has the most weight, most pounds of fish.
Yes, but isn't the video of whoever the official is catching the winner stuffing his fish?
No, he stuffed it on the boat.
He's removing it. He's, the video is him removing the, digging in the belly and grabbing.
Which by the referee, right?
Yeah.
So apparently, that's what I don't understand, is if they caught them cheating.
Yes.
Why is this such a big deal? They caught them.
Right.
Because they've been doing it probably all year.
Because four fish don't weigh thirty-three grams.
So I didn't say they caught them, right?
They've won tens of thousands of dollars and other guys that have gone out and spent money.
Yeah, that's a sanctioned, that's a sponsored.
And then I heard that, like, these guys are all yelling, call the cops, call the cops.
I think them guys wanted to beat the hell out of them.
I, I think they did.
Well, did you hear in the video, he goes, nobody touches him. If anybody touches him, they're out.
Which that's a good.
Oh, this, oh wow.
He said that, which I thought was good, because a brawl in the parking lot.
I couldn't get past all the F-bombs whenever I watched the one video I watched.
So, so explain to me this, so how did they actually discover the weight? Was it literally the fact that it was thirty-three pounds, or did like it make a point?
The guy, whenever they picked the fish up or something, you could, he felt it, yeah. They felt, you could feel the weights in it, and they said you could see that something wasn't right with the fish.
When you had other fish that were similar size, the diameter was similar size, but their weight was three or four pounds less.
Yeah.
It's like, wait a minute, same length, looks like the same girth to me, how do you pick up three extra pounds?
Makes you wonder, like you said, how long have they been doing this, you know?
Oh boy, I feel sorry for John. Chuck's got a mountain hallway.
We still got fifteen more minutes. He's getting paid for this.
Is that how you're paying her?
That's how it works in Hudson.
If you are, you get paid an awful lot for your minimum working hours.
Hey, listen, I, I, I'm on the phone pretty frequently during the day.
Yeah, somebody else don't return calls.
Uh-oh.
Not, not to mention any names.
It's up.
No, he ain't paying no attention.
Call that.
I'm going Gina. We'll talk to him.
I call back to those that leave messages.
I don't leave messages, I send the text.
I don't mind that.
That's quite the caveat there, man.
I type messages.
Yeah, I know when there's gonna be October baseball.
I've never seen it before.
Yeah?
Have you heard anything about that?
Apparently they always went to somebody else. I've never seen it before.
Really? Cause I've never heard anything.
So their money in the boat, this year, you're hunting whenever it snows.
Always.
Actually, if they, you see what most people don't know, is that we have used spent nuclear fuel rods.
I do.
Nine streets. They're hot already. Nice. That's why none of us ever wanted to use street view. When I hear about.
You're gonna have some reading homework.
We'll save the money on freaking gas.
There's always a rubbish committee, always, always.
The real question is whose committee is it? I didn't know you were coming, nobody told you. You can have Patrick's seat, you can have Patrick's seat.
No, it's okay.
Or you can sit next to Mara, whichever you prefer.
Sit over in the corner.
They're going to know who the mystery came.
Exactly, just don't identify me, we're fine. I did bring Patrick's, uh, agenda though. Now you appear to.
Hi, what was that?
There's no, there's nobody here.
Well, Catherine will be here, cause Patrick's not here, so you can, well, but I would say Catherine should be in Patrick's seat, right? Wouldn't that make sense? Put people wherever.
Alright, well, I'm playing in the seat then. I'm doing it.
You can go through the incredible amount of stuff that Catherine has to do.
Well, that's part of the reason, who knows what they get, there's gum, there's, there's choc, yeah, we did find chocolate.
Hey, there's no chocolate in my drawer. Some, some, somebody's missed it.
Something's happened, yeah.
Mr. Diorio, did Mr. Diorio call you?
He did, yes sir.
Okay.
Yeah. Do you wanna, do you wanna discuss it now, or do you wanna discuss it in the meeting?
Probably in the meeting.
Yeah, that makes more sense.
Okay.
Perfect. Hey Ben, quick question.
Hi, Dan Brian.
Thanks for the info.
You're welcome, sir. Are y'all here for a class too?
We are.
Okay, what school?
Uh, Jackson. Jackson's very good. Let me guess, AP policy? Uh, CCP policy. CCP two of us in the same class. Three times. Government, HP government, the policy. Do you need your forms signed?
Yes, please.
Why don't we take care of that right now? Do you want to take your notes as we go?
Development, ingress, withdrawal.
Full, right in, right out, that's not due.
They're basically a super bowl, and the in, and the out. So I would say in, but only right out? Yes, yeah, so if you could, if you'd like, if you have the speed line in the corner, it's a very. Yeah, so the speedway on the border, the nursery actually, it's a standard for, but also down here. Maybe the development is based on. Yeah.
It's just a proposal.
Oh, the next one, yeah, the next one together, how long?
Thanks for being here.
Oh, which is the only time.
Yeah, we don't really.
Well, they don't want.
That's true, they're, they're trustee.
Right.
Yeah, they're okay. Yeah, there's no motion.
No, there's no motion, it's disgusting.
Did you get a letter?
Yeah. There's a two hundred feet of the furthest to the south.
Did you tell us get an agenda by any chance?
No.
It's on the hallway, you should come in on the table.
Oh, okay, Ben.
Money from you? I don't know.
Yeah, I'm gonna go, yeah. Are you gonna do that? It's about the level of. It's gonna have a soft.
My weight was going for me.
Oh, okay. Well, just can't discuss this stuff.
Yeah. Can we do that?
Yeah, they've, they've gone through a tough time getting some equipment at the last minute.
Yeah. What time is it tomorrow?
Five.
I didn't. You think there would be some. You know?
We have, we have a lot of electric. Between. Myers. Yeah, we had to have an extra two ton truck, truck. I mean.
I've been doing some of this with them.
Yeah.
Real nice.
Yeah, this is cell tower.
You the patch?
Right now, yes, we're.
I was trying to find out, there was a guy that used to do all the local stuff, and I followed him for a while, and cut it off, dog. So just wondering who you were with.
I'm with the South, so I was. Yeah, it's up there.
Oh, you're Chuck? Hi, from the area.
Oh, yeah, I'm pleasant.
Hi. How you doing?
I tried to video take two of these for the city, audio is a little poor. Fifteen thousand dollars. And I think I provided.
Yeah, you did good. There was a guy that used to do local politics? And I can't think of his name, and I followed him for a long time, he was real good, and then all of a sudden he just dropped off, and I keep forgetting to search him out. I found him on Twitter, but he's like, not doing anymore. He, he did a good job. He was like everywhere. I can't think of it. That's okay. No, he, he did own his own, he had his own blog.
Oh yeah.
And it was, I don't think it was the patch, it was something like that. He was real good for politics.
They did have a little truck. Had a couple of girls who were local supporters.
Full block, I mean, everything would be definitely.
I have to find him, I'll get it to you. I'm on the email list from Chris, so I see you. Yes.
Okay.
I grew up over there, in that mess. Someday I wanna pick your brain about what you know about it.
Well, Chris is, uh.
I know.
Very knowledgeable.
I know, but it's hard to talk to her sometimes, she just really goes.
Get your attention, she's gonna keep you there for a half an hour.
For a long time, because of the way she talks, I thought, okay, this woman is crazy, she's just crazy.
She's very passionate.
And then it occurred to me, we were talking about, she had called me a message about something. I don't remember what it was, and I called her back, and I said, you know, you, this sounds, this story sounds as crazy as the guy that I used to, my boyfriend, his brother got arrested on, you probably know about the story. And it was a setup to avoid a water sample.
Oh, water sample.
Yeah, and, and I was like, and she's like, how do you know about that? I'm like, well, I talked to him, and he told me about it, and I was like, flabbergasted, I was like, how can that even happen? And that's how I knew what she was saying was true, cause it was just like, okay, it's, it's that crazy.
So you're connected to, uh, the council on? Was that with her son?
Uh, yeah, I don't know her. I knew, I went to school with, um, his wife. Uh, the mayor's daughter, I think. Was it the mayor's daughter?
Uh, yeah, I'm sure that's the one.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that was a mess. That was a mess. And then you start realizing how far up some of these things go, and you know, anything's possible at this point. Leanne Ramirez. Yep, it's nice to meet you.
Not sure, you should be, you should be shortening it. Nothing in there, or shaky eye. There is a zoning law in the field for you tomorrow night.
It is?
For the what?
For Myers.
Oh. Yeah, I'm not sure they would. I don't really have much opinion on that stuff. Yeah, I wonder about the.
I was over walking by your house one day. Knocked, knocked on the door one day.
Well, and I think that's, that's a big thing that a lot of people don't think about, is how far back some of this stuff goes, and that you see things repeating, or starting to repeat, and you're wary of them because you saw what happened in the past. And like me, like I said, coming from Union Town, and looking back over some of the stuff that's on record as what happened, and it was totally corrupt.
We got a problem.
No.
She was pretty, um, close to Chris Brown.
I was in the military, so I was gone for a long time.
And now call to order, the committee of the whole meeting on October third, twenty twenty-two, the time is seven PM. Ben, would you please call the roll?
Member Orr?
Here.
Member Volt?
Here.
Member Schrein?
Here.
Member Waring?
Here.
Member McLeister?
Here.
Member Matheny?
Here.
Member Wierich is absent, sixth brother.
Will you excuse Member Wierich?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Question carries? Okay, we'll start with the former rubbish committee, uh, utilities.
It was the water sewer and rubbish committee, but yes, we can start here, we can. Oh yeah, sure. Yeah, so what we have here is actually a, a pretty unique opportunity that the city has, um, so I'm sure we've all taken a look at it. Uh, basic gist of this is, is back in the nineties, the city entered into an agreement with, um, with Ameritech, which is now ATT, I believe. And for the lease of cell phone space on the top of one of our water towers. And this generates approximately two thousand dollars a month. Um, it had been, the contract, I believe, uh, was re-upped in twenty eighteen, but it has been consistently around that, uh, ever since its inception. So we have been approached by Unison Wireless, and that is a company that, um, owns, sells, um, maintains, um, cellphone leases, cellphone tower leases. And they are looking to purchase this, uh, cellphone site. And so the upfront cost, whoopsie, I didn't mean to hit on that, the upfront cost is four hundred seventy-one thousand dollars. So that would be an upfront purchase that we can use to make meaningful improvements within the community, um, as opposed to just waiting to cash those two thousand dollar checks every month. So there are a couple good opportunities with this, such as if Unison does find other customers that may be interested in that space, there would be, um, some, some sharing of that profit if they do bring other people in. And, and of course, if we can develop a good working relationship with them, there might be other sites in the city that we might be able to capitalize as well, so, um. Uh, and then we are asking for an emergency on this, so we can, uh, you know, get this wrapped up as soon as possible, but, uh, that's pretty much it. And, um, you know, do we have anybody from, uh, Catherine, do you have anything for the administration you'd like to add?
No, I think you've covered it. Um, you know, we, we are considering that if, with the sale of this, we may allocate a portion of this for an improvement in the city parks. We do have the, uh, Dogwood Pool project, that we would like to be able to bid that out in the spring. We only got three hundred fifty thousand dollars from the state when we asked for seven fifty, so if we can get a good number on this in the high four, then that would go towards this project.
How many other cell towers do we own within the city?
It's a good question, I don't know. To my knowledge, this is the only one, so. Right. I do know the schools has, have a site, but as far as the city has.
But then there was the possibility of possibly putting them on other places.
And that's why, you know, having this relationship with Unison would be, would be great, because they're, they're, they would be the experts in that, and they would help with marketing those sites out, so.
Is there a term on this lease? How long is the term?
It's coming up now.
No, I, I mean this lease with Unison.
If you have the lease, you have it in front of you?
I, I could not find a term.
We're selling the net lease proceeds to Unison for a cash buyout.
But then they own that?
Yes.
They own that. In that, forever? That space on top of the water tower forever?
Yes.
How's that work? Yes. Thank you. Um, no, they do not own the space on top of the tower forever, they own it as long as the original lease was effective. So basically, think of it as an assignment of the underlying lease and the proceeds related there too, for an upfront cash payment. So as long as the underlying lease is valid, that's the term of this. Once that lease expires, this expires as well.
Okay, cause I, I couldn't find anything on term in the contract, that's why I was concerned. And then I was concerned, and I, I know, I reached out, and Mr. Diorio said you were gonna answer some of my questions, and, uh, in the scheduled rent, it says that, um, if at any time the rent actually received by Unison, paid by the AT&amp;T, uh, is less than the scheduled rent, then Unison shall retain all rents, and units such, uh, is received, full amount of scheduled rent, which would then be due to Unison. But I think it states that they don't have to pay anything. So if they, if they sell more space, but they don't collect rent, then they don't pay any additional, is that how that works?
Yeah, so ultimately, and you're referring to the net profits agreement, just for clarification, paragraph four, in the net profits agreement. So yeah, so the, the concept is, you know, once they buy out the term of the underlying cell tower lease, we're done there, as far as rent, we're not getting anything else off, then it's upfront pay. The net profits agreement is for future development of the site, and that would be that in the event, basically, they're serving as our marketing agent, and in the event they're able to get more users on the site, we get seventy-five percent of the proceeds that come in from those new agreements. But to answer your question, as it relates to four, yes, so it's ultimately, Unison is going to have these agreements with these third-party, uh, individuals or companies, I should say, who would want to lease out the cell tower, and basically, in the event that they do not receive their rent, then we don't get paid. So in essence, if the tenant defaults, then we don't get paid until the tenant actually comes.
So we have an opportunity for additional ten bucks, just whether or not to pay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, I think the other one is the default side of this, um, in six. We're not entitled to terminate the easement agreement, created under this agreement for any reason whatsoever, including the breach of this agreement, or the easement agreement. So that was my concern, is if they breach the contract, we still can't end it, but it sounds like it will end when that twenty eighteen lease is up.
Yeah, and, and to, that is correct, the last statement is correct. As to answer your former question, as far as the breach issue, we gotta keep in mind that these are two separate agreements. They're interrelated, but they're two separate agreements. So the concept would be, and the main thing that Unison is looking for, that in the event there was a breach of the net profits agreement. So the, somehow a breach where rent wasn't paid on time, something along those lines, that we couldn't just terminate the communications easement that we had given them. So we basically couldn't lock them away from the site if they breach as to future development. Does that make sense?
It does, and, and breaching the contract, you know, I generate more questions, because I'm not an attorney, I don't study those contracts, it just adds more questions. So thank you for answering, if that helped.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. This, or Dr. Dior, or, uh, Google.
I mean, what was it, what's the, uh, what's the life on the, uh, two thousand eighteen, what was the term of the two thousand eighteen contract you called?
Yeah, so there's an additional from two thousand and eighteen, there was an additional forty years.
Forty?
Twenty, forty, four zero, so twenty fifty-eight, the expiration. And that's pretty standard for these contracts, I've actually seen much longer terms as far as the extension.
The other question is, because we deal with this regularly, you're comfortable with, uh, this arrangement terms, there's no caveat, fine print, intellectual fine print, uh, that we, uh, we should stick in the back of our heads on this?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with these terms, I guess, for some, some background, this agreement was based largely on one that I negotiated with a different client at the end of last year. And so rather than reinvent the wheel, Unison acknowledged the fact that I had just dealt with them literally four months prior, and so they used our same base agreement that we had negotiated as the starting point here.
Is that all, Darren?
Well, I think, I, I think the other, the other point is, uh, for all of us, as we look at the budget down the road, is that, uh, we've got a swimming pool that's going to require an upgrade. And this will be one way potentially to, to mate the proceeds with state grant of three fifty, and that'll get us pretty close. There'll be no pressure on, uh, Kathy to get that project done.
We could probably bid it out in the spring, early spring, and then it would begin in the fall, after Labor Day, we suppose.
And for, I guess, for the purposes of press, intervening here, uh, what we're contemplating and what will come to council will be a complete rebuild of the Dogwood Pool, uh, pavilion, bathhouse, et cetera. The idea is to make it better ma, better maintenance, head cap is accessible, et cetera. Completely modernized.
It's a fifty-two year old.
Fifty-two year old structure. And that's, and, and that's the administration's plan to come to us for that.
So we can do something meaningful with, uh, with this money, and, uh, at your point, replace the fifty-two year old.
I was under the impression that Ian Warhappity was gonna be paid.
I'm sorry to break the dad, been wired for, for snow removal, for heated street, yep. Anybody else have any thoughts on this? I would move that we, uh, put this on.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Question carries? Finding some property, Stephanie?
Okay. Um, and Gina, I'll let you talk, um, about the several good things, and we have to do this at the end of each year, just transferring monies to make us pretty much even at the end. Um, but we were looking at street lighting, um, as a cost economic development, the parks, um, really a lot, a lot with the parks. But the good news was we had some COVID funding that helped offset that, so it really only left us with about a sixty-four thousand dollar transfer. Gina, I'll let you kind of elaborate on that.
Yeah, I think you touched on all of them.
Okay.
Street lighting, as, as everybody's experiencing at home, our A E P bills are a little high and so we didn't budget quite enough to get us through the end of the year. I think this will cover it on the street lighting fund. As far as the parks money we just talked about, we'd like to take the money from the proceeds of this and transfer it into that Parks Reserve Fund for now so that we can bid out the project in the spring. The COVID relief funds, that's a sewer infrastructure project that we're gonna hold off until next year. And our engineer, city engineer is going to apply for some other grant funds, O P W C, those to match with sewer extension funds. And then we've received additional donations, so we would like to allocate those so we can use them as well. Okay? Any concerns or issues? Okay, and move to a document.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Next up is street and alley committee. That's mine. So this is to vacate alleys. There's three alleys mentioned here. This is gonna be an ongoing process, so this is not the first time we've seen this and it's not gonna be the last time.
What's that?
You know he gave us this.
Yeah.
Okay.
So there is, uh, they did, did give us a draft copy of the plats there. So this is three different alleys. We don't maintain them. They're, they're not used for being alleys anymore. It just makes sense to, to vacate them. And again, this is gonna be an ongoing thing. This is gonna happen again. So any questions, any discussions on this?
I have a question. Are you gonna give?
We don't, this isn't, we, we don't discuss things to the audience. It's, you can ask a question after though, if you'd like.
If I may try to anticipate what this question was going to be. The, so on the screen here, we have the three alleys, the northernmost or furthest to the left on your screen. Both sides are owned by the Halter family, so the entire alley will become the private property of the Halter family. The middle alley, both sides are entirely owned by the Bostler family trust, so that alley will entirely become the property of the Bostler family. And then this third alley is where it gets slightly more complicated. So there are actually three properties that touch this alley, which anybody from the public wants to see, there's a big plat on that white table back there for you. So because we're doing this vacation without a petition, under state law, we must split it right down the middle to the property owners on either side. So to the south, the furthest right would get, you know, half the alley all the way down. That's the Humbert family. The house on the left of it, owned by the Di Stefanos, they would get almost the entire left-hand side of the alley except right at the end. Uh, the Whitallis, Whitless family, I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name.
Whitallis, you were right the first time.
Has a little like hook behind the Di Stefano family property, so they actually touch the alley, so they'll get a little rectangle of property.
And do most of those families use that alley to get in and out of the house?
So right now, all three function effectively as people's driveways.
That's what I wondered.
How, how this came to me was the Humberts wanted to build a fence. And then our permits department informed them that it's not actually their property. So then it ended up on my desk of, hey, we'd like to vacate this alley because it's not serving anybody except them. Might as well give them the property. So these, all these affected families would receive this property for free from us.
Got it.
Is this non-petition proposal and the distribution of the alley? Does that work best for, is that the best scheme for the three property owners? Or would they be better off with a petition? And proposals of their own?
That would sort of be up to them. So when we started this, the, a different person owned one of the properties for that alley and refused to sign the petition, which is why we went forward with a no petition process.
Okay.
The new owners may be more, that, the property owners would have to discuss that. I did mail out letters that this was coming up and they may be here tonight or they may come to our public hearing on the twenty-fourth and wish to do that.
So if there would be a petition and an alternate proposal, there is an opportunity for the three property owners to devise that new formula that might be more agreeable. That's basically what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Sounds like yes.
So you got time?
And you can talk to us afterwards.
Yeah.
It's not that long of a minute.
Got some time.
We'll hang around afterward for any questions.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so first I'll make a motion and a second, or I'll ask for a motion in a second to move it to the agenda.
Revolt will move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And can I have a motion in a second to send it to the planning, planning commission?
Revolt will make that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? And I'll undertake a motion in a second to schedule a public hearing for six forty-five P M on October twenty-fourth.
Revolt will make that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Ordinance and rules, John?
All right, we've all got a copy of this. Really, I'd like to push this off till after the election. We, we've got it ahead of the election, but we don't know what the outcome of the election will be for the four-year term or what, what's on there. So I would like to wait till after the election. Do we all have this in hand? I think that would be the best thing to do.
Good idea.
It's the only thing to do.
It's the only thing to do.
Right. I think what we, I think what we've got is based upon the sort of far-ranging conversation we had about replacements. I think we've got, I think we've met everyone's concerns, both in the audience and around the council chamber. I think we've got an orderly approach to succession vacancies. I think that's agreeable, but as Chairman Orr has said, we're gonna have ample opportunity to revisit it and tinker with it and this can't, couldn't go to the help me out clerk, what is the, the earliest that we could do, assuming this, the four-year term passed? The earliest that we could actually have it placed on a ballot would be when?
Since North Canton probably won't have a May primary next year, it would be in November next year.
Okay, and so that would have to be done sometime in advance of August?
Uh, roughly June.
June?
Not more than a hundred twenty days before.
Not more than a hundred twenty days. Okay.
Not more than a hundred.
Not more. If we do more than a hundred twenty, we have to call a special.
Okay.
Okay, there you go. So clerk will have that on his calendar.
Perfect.
Have we entertained it? Any thought if the, if it does get voted no, would we wanna put it back on the ballot as a special election and a winner?
I think it's something we could.
Yeah.
Let's look at the.
Wait till the results go from there. No, nothing else, man.
Any further?
Thank you. Ben for. Okay, craft that.
You're welcome. I'm sorry for misunderstanding the first time.
I'm obtuse.
No motion necessary on that one. And finally, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Revolt seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Hey, Matt.
That's it.
You said something about a meeting on the twenty-fourth.